Hey everybody, this is Sharon. Can you hear me? Yeah. I think we only have Alex Fisher on at the time.
Sharon, do we know if Reverend Pastor Stevenson is going to join?
Yes.
Janet said yes he is.
Okay, all right. Wait a second.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're muting. And he said he'll be on shortly. He is running over in a meeting that he had at work, so he should be on shortly.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hey there, good afternoon.
I do apologize. I had a meeting that popped up and it went over a little bit, so let me... Let's start with the motion to approve the conduct meeting by electronic means.
Yes, let me pull that up real quick here. This is Alex Fisher. I move that the items on the meeting agenda constitute essential business of this board. Meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans, considering the COVID-19 outbreak and any rules that conflict with the governor's executive orders permitting electronic meetings be suspended. That's my motion.
A second all in favor vote by sound of aye.
Aye.
All approve. As have it. All right, let me pull up the agenda. I apologize. Let me get that here. You've had a chance to review the November 19 minutes. At this time, I will accept the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second moved and properly second all in favor vote by sound of aye.
Aye.
As have it. That motion approved. Now we'll have a COVID and ACS update. Bruce, you're recognized.
All right. Sharon, are you guys gonna put that up on the screen? One second. I'm sorry. Sharon and Janet, can y'all share that screen? Or, okay, there you go. Thank you. All right, there you go. I just want to make sure everybody could see it. This is our CARES Act through the month of December, Mr. Chairman. You can see that we received the money, as you well know, in three separate payments totaling $10.27 million. In FY 2020, we drew down roughly $2.6 million related to lost revenues, which is eligible under the CARES Act for hospitals. And then we had $472,000 of expenses, labor, and supplies that were offset in fiscal year 2020. That, those were obviously part of the audit that was presented to the board last month and approved. So those had been reviewed previously by our external auditors, and all was in order. For fiscal year 2021, the six months that started July 1 of 2020 through December 31, we've incurred and drawn down $3.4 million of revenue losses and approximately $1.5 million of expenses. Much of that is labor-related costs for hazard pay differentials, some retention payments that were made to critical staff in shortage areas, and then obviously protective equipment and some medical supplies, treatments that directly address COVID like remdesivir and so forth, for a total of 1.5 million. We have at the close of December a little more than $2.2 million remaining, and it's eligible through the remaining... This fiscal year, it's eligible to be spent, and we expect it will be probably spent by that time. As far as the ACS update, just as a heads up, Mark Brown and myself were on a call with the state. I think it was Monday of this week, and they let us know that they would be discontinuing the alternate care site here at the hospital where they're renting the eighth floor and the second floor for COVID. So effective May 31, the state is giving that space back to the hospital, and we will be losing that $840,000 a year in annual rent payments when that occurs. So that's just a heads up. That's new news, not reflected here, but it is something that, you know, has an impact on our 2022 budget. And for the last month of this fiscal year, we're not gonna have that revenue available to the hospital. So any questions, Mr. Chairman or Alex?
No questions at this time, Bruce.
Just out of curiosity, Bruce, was there a lot of capital or build-out associated with the eighth floor?
There was. It was all, it was all paid out by the state team. I think we did not have any significant cost to build out the eighth floor or second, and they are going to largely put it back. The second floor had minimal work, so it will pretty much be available back to the hospital when they exit end of May. I think the eighth floor probably had the most, the majority of the spend. We, it was none of our money, not the hospital's money. They will be taking their supplies, and I, they believe their beds and the nurse call system out of that space. So it will be basically a shell, not suitable for acute care at this point, but certainly could be converted at some point in time for further use, but it's not set up like a hospital. It's set up like a ward or something along those lines with four bed areas with one shared bathroom, which would not meet acute care criteria for a hospital. It's nice space, though, for a purpose that it was built, but it really won't have any long benefit to the hospital.
Thank you. The COVID and ACS update was for informational purposes.
Yes, sir.
So no action is needed there, so we'll move to our critical capital needs.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, this is, if you recall Frank and Alex, we had a, our board meeting last month. We presented about $2.5 million worth of critical capital items, and the board endorsed us sending those forward to the administration for consideration with 4% capital money in this fiscal year. I think Chairman, Board Chairman Fagin's received some response back asking that we narrow that down to a more digestible $1 million, pick our most critical of that critical list, which we did. And I think Dr. Fagan submitted a letter to the mayor requesting these four items for critical capital. The biggest two, of course, on this list are the refurb CT, which would be, give the hospital a second CT unit so that we don't go down or go on diversion when the main unit is down for repairs. And then the second large item was a refurbished angio suite that would allow both the cath lab and the interventional radiology providers to operate at the same time, whereas now they, they sort of have to fight over the main cath lab. whereas now they, they sort of have to fight over the main cath lab, which causes some cases to be pushed to the next day or drawn unnecessarily late into the evening. So those are probably the two most critical. And then we had a fracture table to replace a very old fracture table in the OR. We've got two full-time orthos and a podiatrist, and we think that's a wise spend of money. And then we have an old, out-of-date intra-aortic balloon pump in the cath lab, which has pretty much tripled its volume this year. And you don't wanna have to use that balloon pump, but if a patient gets into trouble and we need to stabilize them and get them to another facility, it's really critical to have, you hope to not use it, but every once in a while it pops up that you need it, and that thing is going out of date soon, still functional, but it's just a liability risk for the hospital once it's no longer supported by the manufacturer. So those were the four items that executive teams selected out of that 2.5 million, and Dr. Fagan sent that letter to the administration probably a week and a half ago. So this is just information update.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So let's jump into 2022 budget.
So Finance Committee folks, team, Mr. Chairman, Alex. This probably is a very challenging budget for the hospital to put together. So many things happened unusual in this year, and so these are the rough numbers, and I'll just walk through them real quickly, and then I'll give you guys a little context and a little sense about what some of the assumptions and what's changing 21 versus 22, because there's some pretty big differences on this page that jump out to the finance people, may not jump out to others. In 2020, last four months, and then obviously 2021, the hospital was significantly affected by COVID. Our patient volumes, our operating costs went up quite a bit. And then, of course, we had those non-recurring revenues at 10.2 million that we referenced previously. Those are big, big impacts. Before the pandemic hit in 2020, the first seven months of the 2020 fiscal year, the hospital was experiencing growth almost double-digit, roughly 10%. We were very close to budget before the pandemic hit, and volumes dropped anywhere from 25 to 40% for the last, say, four months of fiscal year 2020. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a guessing game for Jerry and myself. We see what the volumes look like currently. They're still a little depressed in our emergency room, still a little depressed in our elective procedural areas, and those are patient behavioral issues, those are not our lack of ability or providers to provide that care. So we're sort of interpolating between where we ran the first seven months of 2020 and where we're pointing right now in terms of volumes. Our clinic volumes have been increasing on range of about 10%, and I think Dorothy is projecting to go from roughly 40,000 clinic visits this year to almost 46,000 next year. And so with that, we expect outpatient volumes in the hospital to grow as well. The hard one is the emergency room, that patient behavior has just changed and people are avoiding emergency rooms in hospitals and seeking out care elsewhere, whether it's urgent cares or in their doctor's offices. Nothing wrong with it, but it's just very hard for us to estimate, because about three-quarters of our inpatient volume actually enters the hospital through the emergency room. So that's an important number for us to, to get close. Our emergency room volumes, we used to do 26, 2700 ER visits a month. A good month now is 2100, and we're not sure if that's gonna return to sort of pre-pandemic levels or when that might happen. And this is common for most hospitals around the country right now. In addition to volumes, we're also looking at operating costs. We've, as a hospital, had to pay COVID or hazard pay differentials into some parts of the hospital, ICU, ER, areas that are directly affected by the pandemic, where they're directly taking care of those patients and where we had shortages because people were going out with the virus and/or leaving to become travelers because it became very lucrative for respiratory therapists and nurses to travel outside the area. So we, we had to incent our existing staff to stay on with us through the pandemic. We're still doing that through February at this point. So those dollars that we're paying right now, those extra dollars, they're being reimbursed through those CARES Act dollars. But when the pandemic subsides, if it does, those dollars should not be expended. And so we're trying to determine when that will occur in our budget projections for 2022. It's at best educated guesses at this point. And so if you look across, you'll see that we're talking about the hospital inpatient volumes, so our admissions grow 7% next year compared to what we're projected to hit this year. We're also talking about our outpatient volumes growing roughly 7% as well. And then we have a 5% charge master increase, so all charges July 1 will go up 5% in the hospital. We won't get paid 5% more, but this is commonly done, it's our annual charge master increase. So if you just look at the numbers, last year, our total charges for the patient charges were 216 million. This year, we're gonna approach 250 million, and next year, we're projecting 275 million. And then if you drop down about halfway through that page, you can see the net patient revenue. So that's the self-generated cash that we actually collect from the patients and the insurers. Last year, with the pandemic impact, it was 38.7 million, actually dropped last year from the prior year. This year, we're projecting 46.1 million, so that's about a 16% increase in collective revenues. And then next year, we're projecting to grow again roughly $3 million in terms of collected patient revenues. So that's the good news. The bad news is if you look down another two lines, you see other. These reflect the lack of dollars coming from the CARES Act next year. We don't know if there will be an additional grant or set of awards related to COVID in 2022. It's not clear at this point, so we didn't think it was responsible to budget as if we were going to receive those dollars. So you can see that revenue drops from $11.9 million to only $3.8 million. That's a big gap to make up. And then, of course, you drop down a little further and you see the city supplement, and that is sort of the, you know, that's the last dollar in from the hospital to the hospital to support patient care. And it's up pretty substantially to cover those gaps for next year. Drop down to salary expenses, you get into the expense areas, you can see salaries are expected to go up 5.7%. A piece of that is a 2, 2.5% wage increase for our staff. This year, we deferred the increases till January as a cost-cutting move, and we'll have to address that. But this is with the 2.5% increase for next year in place. Benefits are a percentage and based on guidance that we get from Metro on pension and healthcare benefits. And then you can see contract labor. We're projecting that it's going to drop $1,004,000 next year. That's also the other reason why my salaries are going up, because I'm hoping instead of having contract labor at $70 or $80 an hour, I'm gonna have those staff working for Nashville General as employees, making probably half of what we have to pay for that contract labor. The other big impactor here is supply expenses. Our supply expenses this year are on the increase because we've obviously added some high-intensity services. Two full-time orthopedists, a full-time interventional radiologist and a full-time interventional cardiologist. Those are vital services to the hospital, but the supplies associated with those specialties are more costly. Those are also services that are very important to commercial payers and to one of our best payers, which is T-Doc. That those are vital services that they have been requesting us to provide, not just to them, but to our broader population. They're a good payer for us up on the seventh floor, and so we're meeting that need. Our other expenses fall relatively in range with where they're projected for this year. So you can see total expenses for next year are projected to be about $3.9 million more than this year. The majority of that is in those two lines, supplies and then the labor costs. Higher salaries but lower contract labor costs. And so there's basically a margin of zero or 232,000 on 115 million dollars of spend. So, Mr. Chairman, this is an initial proposed budget. Obviously, this is what we will provide to Metro government and then go through the budgeting process. I'm sure we'll learn more in our, when we do our January close and even our February close. So these numbers will probably move a little bit. But we believe this is a good roadmap for where we stand today and some of the gaps that we know that we have. The lack of the COVID or the CARES Act money in fiscal year 2022 is a big one to overcome. And of the $46 million we're projecting to collect this year, there's about $2 million. It's actually HERSA, H-R-S-A CARES Act dollars, where the federal government is actually paying for uninsured patients who access any hospital if they have a COVID diagnosis. And so that's not saying that that's a profit for us because we may not have ever seen those patients in the past, but that is part of that, that six, almost $7.5 million increase year-over-year. $2 million of it is from the HERSA grant. United Healthcare is the administrator for those funds. All hospitals are eligible to the extent that they take care of uninsured patients. So those are just some of the highlights. And like I said, we've spent a lot of time as a finance team working on these numbers. These reflect actual expenses and revenues through December, and then we will close January very shortly and we'll update the projected accordingly. So these numbers will move a little bit, they should not move drastically. The other to note in 2021 and 2022 is, of course, two things that happened. You know, sometime in late fall, we were informed by Metro government that the hospital was gonna have to take over payment for the security service here at the hospital. So that was not budgeted at all in 2021 and had a $900,000 annual negative impact. We are paying that, that's in my expenses for 2021, and it is also in our projected expenses for 2022. The other item is the alternate care site. We did have $840,000 projected into 2021 revenues for the rent on that space. That is not reflected in our budget for 2022, so that's a negative of $840,000 of income that we will not see in 2022. So those are just sort of the big picture items, and I'm not sure that we need approval. I, I just really wanted this to be out there, the board to have awareness and be educated about what the fiscal future looks like near term for the hospital. There's a lot of improvement, but we've still got a ways to go.
Thank you, thank you, Bruce. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Bruce, have we had any discussions with Metro Nashville about the city supplement that is projected here?
We have not yet, I mean, these, I can't say, no, we have not submitted this to anyone at Metro. Those are due shortly, the initial, like, Metro agencies actually submitted their budgets, I think, end of last week, but we're not on their Hyperion system. So we really submit ours basically like you're looking at here, and we become a line item on Metro's budget. They don't give all this detail. I think they're aware that, you know, we have requested $46 million last year, and of course, with the pandemic, most agencies basically for Metro had to just deal with whatever their numbers were the prior year. We were in the same boat. So the 49 is higher than the 46 we asked for last year, and is certainly higher than the 43 that we're slated to receive this year. But I, you know, we still have to figure out a way to make these things balance. There may need to be some adjustments, obviously, going forward, and we will bring that back to the Finance Committee and the Board for final approval, because I know there're gonna have to be some changes made.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious about that process. So will we know by the next meeting if that line item has been presented to Metro and kind of their initial responses? Or are we still comments off from that?
No, I'm pretty sure that these will be submitted to Metro before then, but I don't think we'll have the hearings before then or get any direction on what the subsidy number will be or needs to be until probably April timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great, great job, Bruce, you and your team. I tell you what, I know this is a moving target and probably was one of the toughest budgets to predict, but great information.
Thank you.
Now, I know this is not gonna be your final budget numbers, but do you think you need an approval from the Finance Committee or not right now?
You know, it's listed on the agenda as approval. I just didn't want anyone to think that this is the final budget because it's, when we closed January, there's still things that we may learn about our future financials going forward, with or without, maybe positive, maybe negative. We may find out there is gonna be additional COVID or CARES Act money available to hospitals, and that would change our thinking on some of these items. But right now, you have to be responsible, sort of as an accountant, and book the things you do know and that you can anticipate, and you have to be conservative and not try to book, I hate to call it, false revenues to make the picture look brighter than it probably reasonably is. So yeah, I think it would be great to get at least a cursory or a preliminary approval from the Finance Committee with the expectation that we will bring it back for final approval to the Finance Committee and the Board.
Okay, fair enough. Will you also be presenting this budget to the full Board?
It is in the packet, yeah, so, so they have, they will have this available to review.
Okay.
I even gave the written, sort of my sort of shorter version, if somebody wants to peruse it, after the fact they can look at the verbiage, some of the assumptions, some of the things that we tried to budget through and around, just because I know it's a lot to just hear verbally all at once.
Alright, good deal. Alex, you mind giving us a motion to approve?
Sure, motion to approve.
Second all in favor vote by sound of aye?
Aye.
As have it, budget is approved, we'll go now to the December financial statements.
December was a pretty good month for the hospital. Admissions were up about 10% to 185, still a little bit below budget. Observation visits were down a little bit at 145, and patient days a little over 960. Length of stay has been a little bit of a challenge the last few months, and this is another item that we're sort of looking at in the budget that may get changed at some point. Our historical length of stay for the last few years has been in that 4.4 to 4.5 days. But with COVID and some extreme cases, we've had some very long respiratory cases in the hospital. Our length of stay has bumped up quite a bit, and it was 5.2 this month. That's not a good thing for the hospital, occupies beds and absorbs resources typically for no additional payment. So right now, for the year-to-date this year, our length of stay is 5.0. That's what's reflected in the budget for next year. I'm probably thinking through whether that needs to come down a little bit. It depends on how, how strongly you believe that COVID is at least moving into the rearview mirror or whether it's gonna come back and bite us again. But again, length of stay has been a challenge for us, particularly with long respiratory patients, not just COVID, but certainly the COVID patients have had a couple of these 100-day-plus stays. And the great news is that most of them have walked out of here well, which is really a tribute to the clinical staff here. And the great news is that most of them have walked out of here well, which is really a tribute to the clinical staff here and the physicians. Emergency visits continue to be down. The budget was just under 2,500. We just barely went over 2,000. Clinic volume actually went up about 10% this month. They were above budget. And I think there are going to be a couple of months in the near future where the clinics are going to approach, you know, 36, 3700 visits a month. This is obviously a holiday month, so I think the clinics are performing well. Volumes are definitely up, and that's a good bellwether for the hospital long term. December surgeries were off, down a little bit. Inpatient was about 35% below budget and a little below prior month. Outpatient basically flat was last month. And and I really think most of this is just mentality of patients for anything but urgent, urgent cases. They're just trying to defer their care where they can. You can see our cath lab volume is 300, you know, three times the budgeted volume. And that's going to be the case going forward as well because we've got a full-time practitioner in there. We've got a full-time interventional radiologist as well, helping support those numbers. Our patient deliveries, babies 30 last month, up from a low number in November and close to budget. And then you can see FTEs, and the other thing I'll point out is hospital case mix. That's the acuity of the inpatients you take care of in the hospital. And these are really high numbers for Nashville General, and it really reflects the acuity of some of those COVID patients, respiratory patients. And some of the surgical cases that we've managed in the short term. Those are probably the highest numbers I've seen since I've been here three and a half years. So that's encouraging because when you get higher acuity, you tend to get better reimbursement. Because the payers pay according to acuity typically, even though they do it according to a variety of algorithms. So those are good signs for the hospital. Income statement, please. Okay, this is the month of December. You can see our inpatient volumes were 16% above volume, above budget. Even though the days were below budget, the intensity, so the level of intensity of care for the patients and the inpatient units. Were much higher, and that was reflected in that case mix number that I just referenced. So even though we didn't quite hit the budgeted days, the intensity of service was higher than we budgeted. Thus, inpatient revenue was actually higher than budget as well. Our outpatient revenues still well below what we had budgeted. The big drivers there, the emergency room volume being about 20 to 25% below budget. And then our observation patients, that's patients that are in a patient bed, but ultimately discharged. Without being technically admitted to the hospital. Those are big revenue sources for the hospital, and those fall in the outpatient revenue bucket. Those have been lighter. I think that's just patient behavior issues more than anything. And so that that reflects why we're about 3.8 million dollars behind budgeted revenue in outpatient arena. All right, so total, total. Revenues for the hospital, 22 million versus 24 budget. And then the net revenues produced at 4 million versus a budget of 4.4 million, still pretty good performance for the hospital. Only things to point out is down here in the other revenue lines. The 733 and the 1.3 million dollars of other revenue and essential access. Those are mainly COVID or CARES Act dollars being drawn down. And that is a benefit for the hospital that will not be likely to occur in 2022 fiscal year. Drop down to total expenses, expenses were about 500,000 higher than budget. The majority of that is in salaries and contract labor and a little bit in supplies. Those are the big impactors. But all in, a hospital made a small profit of $70,000 against a budget of $131,000. And so relatively good financial month for the hospital in December. And that's my income statement report for the month of December.
Thank you so much, Bruce. In lieu of time, we'll just go ahead and approve, approve this report. And then we will go ahead and adjourn the Finance Committee meeting. So that we'll be prepared for the full Board Committee. So at this time, Alex, can I, can I get a motion to approve?
Yep, motion to approve.
Second, all in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, all ayes have it. And so, and I know we had some other things on the agenda, a couple of other things. But just in in terms of being responsible for the next, and I do apologize, it was, it was, it was a meeting that I just couldn't get out of. So let's go ahead and take a motion to adjourn unless there's something else that we need to approve. Is there anything else that that this committee certainly needs to prove? We'll, we'll, we'll entertain that. If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Reverend Stevenson, this is Julie Groves. We do need an approval of the two contracts that are submitted to the Finance Committee.
Okay, can we, can we take them up at the next meeting?
Certainly, I will let Dr. Webb know that.
So Julie, the two contracts, can you tell us which ones those are?
So the two contracts are both for community health marketing. And I apologize if there's a loud noise on my microphone, but it is two contracts for community health marketing. One is for community and state government relations, and the other is for government relations.
And are those the, do we have to discuss those in the Finance Committee? Are those on the agenda for the, for the larger board meeting?
I believe I saw you earlier in the week, Alex, indicating that Reverend Stevenson felt like they needed to be discussed in the Finance Committee. Before they were presented at the Board Committee.
Gotcha. Okay, Reverend Stevenson, we can, we can talk through those two at our, at our next Finance Committee meeting then.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we just haven't taken any contracts to the full Board until they've been vetted through the Finance Committee. If they haven't been able to be resolved at the Finance Committee, then we would typically go to the Board. It doesn't normally happen in reverse.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just had some questions about it and was kind of thinking for the sake of efficiency. It might be good to have them answered in front of everybody, but but I hear you. We can do our vetting process. And then if there are any questions we still have, we'll have whoever has the information or knowledge to respond to them, to give that information to the full Board as well.
Sounds great.
All right, motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second, all in favor vote by sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you in two minutes in the next meeting.
Sounds good.